Meaning to order, all members are present except Shannon, who will either not be able to make it or leave late. He has a family obligation tonight. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Comments and requests from visitors. Glenn, do you want to speak?
Hi.
Hi. I'm Gwen Anderson. I'm an English learner teacher at Cold Spring Elementary in John Stark Elementary. Tonight you will be hearing my request for a leave of absence, and I just wanted to offer a couple words. I've been a hardworking and reliable employee of the district since 2010. I've been on committees across the district. This school board room is my second home half the time. And across the district, helping my students as well as my colleagues. I've been offered a school advocate, English language development advocate position at Resource Training Solutions, which is a great honor for me and also for the district that one of our own is being asked to assist districts across the state. I will humbly request that you approve my leave of absence request. For whatever reason, this new position isn't a fit for me and my family. I would love to be able to return to the district I consider my home. With my licensure and experience, I know I will be able to find a position elsewhere, but I would love to be able to have the opportunity to return to the Recoree where I know I can continue to do great things with the relationships that I've built. And thank you for the consideration of my request.
Thank you, Gwen. All right. Any other comments and requests? All right. Consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from September 11th, 2017 meeting. We have the treasures report, the approval of bills. We have a number of employment additions. We have a leave of absence request, policy consideration. There's a third reading, policy for, policy 6-5, family leave policy, and policy 6-8 equal employment opportunity. And that's it, right? Is policy 8-14?
8-14.
Oh, and policy 8-14, okay. Let's see. Second reading and final reading is policy 8-17, eliminating extracurricular activities. Policy 6-13, workable limits for certain special education teachers. And the format for policy 8-17 was adjusted. Oh, that's extracurricular. And then policy final reading for policy 8-3. There was just a small policy adjustment, so it's the first reading, but because there were no major changes, it would be, it's been recommended for adoption. There's a teacher salary schedule lane changes, a copy lease authority for the copy machines and then to lease copy machines. And then the superintendent goals, which we talked about. We've had before, but we didn't have quite time to review them before the board meeting, so they're in the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. I actually, I had a few, just a few comments from, just small comments from the superintendent goals, and since we hadn't had a chance to talk to it, talk about it. Is it okay if we pull it?
Sure.
And I can talk with Scott independently if nobody else has. Or we'll just pull it. Okay. So Lisa, would you want to like to amend your?
Yep. I'll amend the motion to approve the consent agenda, less the superintendent goals.
Okay.
I'm okay with the amendment.
Okay. So amended motion by Lisa, seconded by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The consent agenda is approved. And then the superintendents, I just had some smaller, I mean, it's nothing major. I think that the detail of it was really good. And obviously, we have endorsed the general goals, but the procedure and timeline is more of the detail that we haven't had a chance to talk about. The one, the piece for, that I had a question about with, and I know you, for goal one, you talk about, you know, increased alignment with, through the district, particularly at the elementary sites, but I was wondering if it makes sense to include in the side of the goals, the building plan alignment? Or so the building goals, is that the technical, is that the appropriate term? But the building goals and aligning the building goals with, through the strategic roadmap?
You're just talking about one C. Is it? Or are you?
I'm talking about, yeah, it would kind of more like be like one E or if it was, if it was part of one C as a procedure and timeline.
Yes. Strategic roadmap, world's best workforce and building goals are, in my mind, they should all be related, so they would all be encompassed in that one C.
Okay. Is it listed and I didn't see it, or?
No, but the world's best workforce asks us to identify building goals.
Okay.
So for them.
So it's, oh, okay.
It's just a natural progression.
Okay. So it would be redundant to include building goals, then?
We can state that too.
Okay.
In my thinking, that was just, it was just all too.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, if that's, if that's understood as being aligned, I think that's, we don't need to be redundant with that. Let's see. Did you? I like it, I like the focusing on, you know, no more than four areas of development. I think that that's good to be, you know, when you're talking about SMART goals to be attainable. So I like that. And then the, just like the general feedback that I had was, I didn't know, I mean, it's, it's difficult to do, but if there's a chance to make these more SMART, you know? And I know that we talked about that as part of the, in our evaluation process, we detailed asking for it to be SMART. And there were, you know, there are times that it is, but I'm wondering if there's opportunities to be more specific. And you do have, you know, you have, you know, dates and certain times and specific references to, you know, detailing more of the expectation, but I was just curious if there was an opportunity to make, make, you know, SMART, more specific.
I guess I would look at, if I can jump in, I would look at the progress or the reporting back is where that would filter, because I thought there was a lot of detail in the procedure piece.
Right.
And so the progress is where I'm looking for progress.
Right. Right.
But I think what Cara is saying, and I kind of agree, is that the SMART part of the goal should come before the progress on the goal, so that we all know what, what we're measuring that progress on.
So is there an example? Like, can you pull one out that you don't think there's enough information?
Um, let's see. So, all right. So three, if we're going, if we're looking at procedure and timeline for achieving, if we're looking at issue three, three A, but it's on, well, I guess I have the paper copy from last time, so.
Okay, so which goal?
Goal three.
Three?
Okay.
Goal three?
Yeah.
And then inside of the procedure piece, go three.
Okay.
And then A. And then it's, on mine, it kind of goes over to the next page. So it talks about, we talk about incorporate time at academic team meetings, have elementary level team discussions about upcoming events, issues of alignment, issues of collaboration. So just what, kind of defining that a little bit more? That's just one example of where I think if we could have some more fidelity, then we're all, you know, your expectations would be the same as mine, some clarity.
Right. And no, I mean, I understand what you're saying, because if you think of a SMART goal, it's specific, measurable.
Attainable.
Realistic. Realistic and timely. And, or timeline or whatever. And so I get what you're saying is that what's the measurement? I think it's hard to gauge in that statement. What's the timeline for that particular goal?
And I, and I guess I see as a board, it's not necessarily for me to define what that would look like, because again, this is part of, this is part of the procedure and timeline, but just so I'm on the same page as, you know, we're all on the same page as what, what does that look like? So, and again, that's just, that's an example of. But I don't know, maybe, maybe it's just.
I'm having a hard time seeing how you would make that specific one into a SMART, SMART goal, because, I mean, we're looking for the outcome. We're not looking for, did you spend 15 minutes at each meeting talking about this? Because.
Well, I don't think that that's what the time part means. I think what the time part means is what's the measurement and when are you going to reach that measurement? And so I think the measurement piece is not, is somewhat vague in that particular example. And so how do you know if it's, if it's been reached? Because what's the measure to say you've been successful at it?
Yeah. So would, do you have minutes from academic team meetings to show that it's?
Well, I don't know, and I don't know that.
Yeah.
I don't know that we here have to come up with what that is. I just think that Cara makes a good point, that maybe there's some areas where you can work through and try to list what those measurements would be, so it's easier for us to move along throughout the year, to see where we're at.
And part of it probably involves fleshing out the plan a little bit, as far as, you know, what does that, and I am sure you probably have that and, you know, you're aware of that, this is just a document you're providing to us. But if there's, yeah, just a chance to kind of put a little bit more clarity to. And this, again, that's one example, and so I don't know if, I mean, I can.
It would be more the results of those meetings. So, and I don't know that these are core issues, but it's like, if we would see all three schools had the same program done at this time of year.
Right.
That's what you're looking, asking for.
Yes.
So you're asking for alignment and that you want them to be working together, so it's more documentation that they're actually doing the same programs or.
Right.
And I'm not sure.
I think we're getting, we're getting lost in the sense that it's, it's the goal that should be SMART. Not necessarily the procedure and the timeline for achieving it. It's the way the goal, a goal should be written in the SMART format.
Right.
And that's what we talked about when we went through the process for the superintendent, that whole subcommittee that we had.
Yes.
So really, it's more about how do you look at goal number one and are there ways to make that more conducive to the SMART model?
Yeah. And I think that's probably a better way to look at it. But yes, yeah.
Because then what's reported in the other two columns will be the support to that goal.
And actually, goal number one is the one that works best with the SMART goals.
Well, and, yeah, I just picked that one. I didn't even.
Because that one actually has measurable objectives that are part of the world's best workforce.
Right.
Whereas the other two, two and three are more process goals than they are SMART goals.
Right. But within number two, you could rewrite that to be a SMART goal. So increase superintendent accessibility and visibility within district sites. What does that look like? What are you measuring? Is it from, increase it from zero to whatever? Or was it at this level and you want to increase it to, what, what does increasing mean?
And I guess, as the page is written, the goal column is intended to be a broad overview. I view both of the columns that are there as the SMART goal. In that, the broad overview is item, increased alignment of Recoree District Elementary Sites. What does that look like? It looks like all the things listed in the second column. And maybe that's not how you want them, but to me, how we determine if it's happening is whether or not the background information is shared on the three different points that follow, whether or not examples and issues are shared across the buildings. And again, three different examples of that, the work with the building principles. I guess, to me, the first one just identifies the goal. The second column really is the specific things that are part of it, the measurable things that you can see, whether or not those things are achievable. You know, whether they meet, those to me are the definition of the SMART part, but that's just the way that I look at the whole sheet.
So I'm going to.
And then the progress piece is just giving you the documentation that shows whether or not any of those things are happening during the course of the year.
Jason, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I guess, as far as the timeline, I'm thinking, you know, in my mind, the timeline is by the end of next year for everything, unless there's something else that is. So I don't know how much, you know, if there are like benchmarks, like you want to have this done by, you know, half of the year and this done by the end of the year type of benchmark. But I guess when I look at this, I look at the, like, this is the plan for by next June of where we're going to be going, so.
Because it says school year 17, 18.
Right. Right.
I agree, Jason.
Yeah, I guess, you know, there's some, you know, the, that last one, I think, there are maybe specific opportunities, you know, in that, you know, supply list. You know, that would be a very simple, but I mean, I don't know if we need to get that detailed or not, but I think there are some, you know, and I think talked about, like, the, because there are more students at CSE, there's a little more, there's a different budget because there's more students, so different opportunities and trying to maybe equalizing some of that opportunities across this three district, or the three elementary schools, so.
So for the most part, you feel, so the timetable, and I guess I agree as well with the timetable, but the, and some of it's going to be beyond, too. It's going to be continual work beyond just the end of the school year or the fiscal year.
Right.
But in general, you feel that there's, those are flushed out well. And, I mean, not that, I agree, I think that they are as well, but just looking for more specific and measurable pieces, but you feel, just to understand where the consensus is, you feel it's all.
I think we could always be more specific, but, and that's helpful for us at the end when we have those specifics. I think the general, I mean, I feel like we're sort of far into this already.
Okay.
I don't know if we can, you know, belabor this a little bit.
Right. But I think it's good discussion, so that every year we can learn.
Yep. I agree. So.
Okay. So I think consensus is to move forward with the vote. Is there a motion, motion to approve the goals? Motion by Lisa?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is celebration of excellence, but we do have 10 minutes for that, so we will table that. First action item is approval of the payment to the Cold Spring Bakery.
Oh, yes. Uh, let me get to that, just a second. So I'll make a motion to approve a check, a check number 965353 in the amount of $110.31 to the Cold Spring Bakery.
Second. Um, oh, sorry. Motion by Jason. I'm not used to seconding. Motion by Jason. I don't mind. Motion by, motion by Jason, second by Cara. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I stand.
Motion carries. Lynn, I stand.
Okay. And then I'll make a motion to approve a check to BSN Sports in the amount of, a check number 96437 in the amount of $1,529.49.
Second. Motion by Jason, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next up is a leave of absence request from Gwen Anderson, EL coordinator and EL teacher at Cold Spring Elementary. And is there, do you have any additional thoughts you want to share with us, Scott?
Just adding in the packet, you provided a lot of the background information that Gwen referenced, beginning on page 73 and 74 are some of the comparisons in terms of the position itself. And then there's also a letter from Lowell Hogginson, who would be the supervisor at Resource Training or part of the Regional Centers of Excellence, explaining their interest and his perspective on the position. As I looked at all the pieces to it and go through the policy on page 71, the policy has a number of criteria for the long-term leaves of absences, which this one would be, there are, you know, some questions. Probably the biggest question would be whether or not it's a position of an equivalent nature. I don't believe it is when you look at some of the history as well. We've granted, and I know the policy says that you are not bound by past practices, so each case is weighed on its own, but when we do take a look at some of that historically for a person moving into a position of a higher level or an opportunity in a lead role, we have given them a leave of absence in those cases. Most recently, Sue Jenkins leaving here as a teacher and going to Albany School District as an administrator, and we gave her a one-year opportunity to do that. And so as I weigh all those pieces of criteria, my recommendation is to grant the leave of absence. But the bottom line decision is yours as a board. The policy says clearly it's a board decision.
Are there any thoughts?
I'm comfortable with the recommendation that we honor your request, so I'd make the motion that we approve it.
Motion by Lynn. Some motion on the table. Is there any discussion or questions? My, I mean, my thoughts on this are, EL teachers are really difficult to find. And, you know, Gwen stated earlier of her contribution as far as committees and all of that, and I agree with that. So, you know, I would be thrilled if Gwen decided to come back, and I think that would be best for our district, you know, if, if we could, you know, retain her back here.
Can you, Scott, can you kind of walk through the process? If we were to approve the leave, what hap, I mean, we're going to have to have somebody fill that role, right?
Correct. And we, in anticipation of the question tonight, we have already posted the position as an anticipated opening. I know that we have a couple of applications last, they're all going to Mr. Skanson, so I haven't looked like yesterday or today, or Monday, Friday or today, but we had, as of Wednesday last week, we had two applicants. So there are potential applicants to replace Gwen at this point in time.
And it's posted as a interim temporary with the idea, I mean, do these people know that they may not have a job?
Yes. Yes. And that will be very clear to them as well when they, we posted it not knowing which direction the outcome of this would be, so that, you know, whether it would be filling a leave of absence or filling a regular position. And that's why we had the anticipated word in front of it. That's usually what we use as a district when we expect an opening, but we don't know exactly what the outcome will be. But we, I know that the folks that have applied, Mr. Skanson has talked with them about that question directly, so they do know about it.
And are we getting internal or are those external? I don't know.
They are external.
External.
And then it's, it's just every, every year? It's a, or is it just a one-year thing?
The request is a one-year leave of absence, which, as the note says, Gwen's note says, shall provide notice of returning before February 1st. That's the expectation that we put, is that the individual receiving the leave notify us by 1st of February, so that we can do the planning with the person that is filling in.
And then the request is for the leave to begin no later than September 29th, but I'm assuming based on the letter from, what was her name, Lowell?
Lowell, yeah.
That that date will depend on whether or not, or when we have somebody to fill the vacancy.
And Mr. Skanson's actually been having much more direct conversations with Lowell, and I don't know the answer to that, but I know that on both parts, we're willing to work together to reach a satisfactory date.
So approval of this doesn't necessarily keep us to this timetable that has been inherent, right? It's, or?
Well, ideally, if we can make things happen, ideally, we would allow Gwen to leave by the end of the week, and she can start there next week. Both parties or everybody involved knows that it may take us longer than that. So I don't, again, I don't know what conversations in detail Mr. Skanson has had with Mr. Hogginson, but.
Is it realistic to even think that of these applicants, that we'd have a decision made and somebody started on Monday?
It's certainly possible. I just don't know. But that's the conversation that would unfold after, after tonight's action.
So I guess, I guess one thing that I'm hesitant on is the specific timeline in the request if we don't have somebody identified to fill the vacancy by the timeline in the request. You know what I'm saying?
I believe there is an understanding on both sides that will work with that date to determine if we have a candidate or not.
Sometimes we've made contingent on having the replacement in place.
Correct.
Not that language.
And that's the language you could add to the leave request if you wanted to do that.
Well, I would, I would.
Modify it that way.
If I could modify it, that's what I would be.
Yeah. Okay with that.
So I just moved to.
Well, there's already a motion.
Yeah, Lynn's got a motion.
Okay. So she'd have to modify.
I'll modify it if you'll second it then.
Yeah.
So your modified motion is to approve the leave request with the exception that.
Contingent, yeah, contingent on the date being contingent on having a replacement in place.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So motion by Lynn, second by Jason. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Okay. We, it is seven, exactly, so we can move on to Recoree Bells. All right. We have a number of them. All right. You guys can all come in. You guys all squeeze in here.
We're really excited.
Is everybody squeezing in?
Oh, geez.
Come on in.
Hi, me. You painted more than I did.
Yes, you did.
Hi, me, too.
All right. My name, my name is Cara Hovin, and I expected to present you all with a Recordie Proud. Mary, I'm gonna have you come up and talk a little bit about it. So I have a daughter that goes to Cold Spring, or Cold Spring, I think it was a Cold Spring, a daughter that goes to Richmond, um, and I noticed the improvements right away. So, um, do you want to talk a little bit about what happened at Richmond and all of the hard volunteering work that took place?
Sure.
So, you're...
Okay. Just so you can be seen, I'm hot. When I started as a principal at Richmond Elementary, immediately I was approached by many of our staff members and some of our PTC members and families about any possibilities that we could work together to improve the presentation of our building. Um, and mainly, they had been talking about doing different painting projects within the building with people that were in the district prior to my arrival. Um, and then in was talking with Mary. Um, we worked together with Brent and some of the old pictures that we had for possibilities of painting red and accentuating some of the brick walls and the different things in our building. Um, so after lots of phone calls and then getting in touch with Jennifer from our PTC, we were able to get some paint from her for one of her projects that she had left over. That was where the gray came from. We worked with Brent and Mary and seeming a lot of different people to find the paint that would work on our walls because we have oil-based paint on our walls, which is pretty much uncommon from our understanding. So we had to work through the process of if we're going to put paint on our walls, what do we have to do? It was a three-step process from scrubbing and applying a chemical to purchasing the right kind of paint. The people from the paint store came to Richmond and worked with Mary and Brent to make sure that it would stick and not scratch off with the littles, you know, it's on the lower part of some of our walls. Um, and then it came to be, well, let's just get together and have a potluck because in my interview, I said I love potluck. And they were very excited about that. So I sent out an email to everybody involved in the Richmond building, including our PTC, and we set a date, and we had a potluck, and all of these wonderful people showed up to help. They volunteered their time and their energy, and they brought rollers and food, and we had just a great time painting the main office, the nurse's office, my office, the lounge. And then when you walk in, you see the red. Um, one of our students, who's not with us tonight, Chloe Higgins, painted the Recordie emblem on the wall as you walk in on the left-hand side. Jen's daughter volunteered to help us paint. I mean, people were coming out of the woodworks. It was just a crazy, exciting, really good way to get to know people and to be proud of what we have at Recordie. So that is where this nomination came for all these wonderful people.
Awesome. Thank you. You said it very well. And we have, Richmond is such a great, has such a great sense of community, and this is a wonderful example of why. Because people step up and take that, go through the extra effort and take the time, and it builds such a wonderful sense of community, and it really does affect our whole town. And so, um, you know, really from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys for what you guys do at, at our school and for our community. It really does make a difference. So thank you guys very much. Um, we're gonna take a picture, and I'll hand these out.
Okay.
So, okay, let's see. Dana?
Dana? Yeah, she couldn't be here tonight.
Sorry. Um, Mary, quote. Kim Evans.
She couldn't.
Jen Elias. Judy Stiles.
Thank you.
Oh, we're still on camera.
Do you want to see this?
Carrie, Amber, Irene, Susan, Suzanne. Oh, sorry. Brent, and then Jennifer Knight, or Jennifer, what was that? And then Chloe Higgins is in here, and...
Chloe Hoey, Rohee.
Oh, Chloe Hoey?
Yes, she was a homecoming student in our, went through our system.
Okay, we'll get her saying yes. Yep, and we'll get you, yep. Okay, great. So we're going to take a picture. Thank you guys all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, back up. Um, it was just brought to my attention that, um, we have Student Senate here tonight, and I, obviously, I, I noticed you, and we've just spent a summer break for Student Senate, um, but we're really glad to have you, and you're new. So I'd love it if you, I don't know if you have a report for us? If you want to give a little introduction about yourself as well?
Uh, yeah, my name is Anna Rae Tannenbeck. I am a junior here at Recordie, and Mr. Staski came in and told us about the opportunity to come and watch the meetings. I was interested, so I thought I'd come. This is my first time, so...
Okay.
I don't know if, um, do I, like, announce, or is it just, like, more of an observation?
In the past, we put it on the agenda that, um, you can give a report about what's happening in Student Council and if there's projects going on, things that happen at Homecoming.
Yeah. And we just did have Homecoming week. That was a busy week. But, um, everything went really smoothly, so... So if you'd want me to, like, type something up, or is it more of just like a...
It's, it's less formal, so you can just, you know, and you don't have to come up with everything on the spot, but you, we just like to hear updates of the activities that the Student Senate is, is working on. And, um, it's nice to have students here as well because, um, you know, you're the reason why we do this. And so it's helpful to have your voice in conversation sometimes, and so, um, to be able to ask you questions or to participate in board meetings, so...
I was trying to figure that out.
That's kind of your role, and we can talk more about that too offline, but, um, and more about the previous reports of the past and stuff like that. But that's just generally what it is, so... But thank you, Amber.
Anna Maria.
Anna Maria.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Anna Maria, okay, perfect. Um, thank you. Okay.
And you don't have to stay the entire meeting unless you really like to? Is there a time that you would like to give her that?
Um, I would say whenever it, I think you can use your own judgment. You have the board book, so if there's a conversation that you want to, um, stay for or be a part of, um, that would be great. But if, you know, you have homework or need to get going, don't feel like you have to stay the whole meeting, try to keep the meetings shorter, but sometimes they can go longer, so...
Okay.
And you normally would have her, if she has a report, that's earlier in the agenda anyway? So that would have happened already?
Yep, and it's, yeah, it's right, um, it's, it's under comments and requests and, uh, comments and requests from visitors is a subsection where it's just the Student Senate report, so...
Okay.
But yeah. All right, well, thank you very much. All right. Okay, heading back into the agenda. We are in action items. Um, action item, uh, D, levy certification.
Oh, thanks. Oh, it's, wait. Scott got his to rotate, and mine, view, is not, and I don't want to turn my head sideways, so I'm just gonna go this way. The, um, the attachment that I have is from our, um, twenty-seventeen, page twenty-eighteen, levy limit and certification. Um, so in your board packet, what we do is we can either, um, approve right now the proposed maximum, or you can choose a dollar amount. Um, so what I'm recommending is that we just, um, approve the maximum as listed. And then that way, if there are any updates that MDE makes on, um, enrollment or changes, sometimes they have weird errors that come through, those will, um, come through and be updated. And then this would also be, um, updated if our capital project levy, um, gets approved this November. Um, so you're approving, um, to certify the maximum right now. If you look, um, kind of in the middle of the page as a comparison of this year to last year by the fund, so it shows general community service, debt service, and OPAP debt. Um, and so the debt service line is going down a lot, like we anticipated, because of our, um, two bonds that we refunded. Um, so that directly affects how much we levy to pay off the interest on those. And then in the general fund, that increase is, um, almost all of it, about a hundred and seventy thousand of that is long-term facilities maintenance. And so, um, the state phased that funding in over a couple of years. And so now this is the full amount of it, and then going forward, there won't be any more increases to it. I think it's something like, oh, gosh, I'm not gonna remember the dollar amount. There's a per pupil dollar amount that we get, and now this is the full, the full year of it. So right now, um, in total, the, we're showing a decrease of about seventy-three thousand, or about one point two four percent. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of the dollar values or any of those. Otherwise, what we'll do tonight is approve to certify the maximum.
I was just gonna say, that's usually been the best way to do it because I know we've had years where we've probably gotten three or four updates from the Department of Education because they realized they figured something wrong or there was more money in an account than they thought, so they would keep sending us updates. And if you certify the number on here, then you can't make adjustments in December when we do the final levy.
And this is one page of thirty-nine. This is a very long document, so...
Excuse me. Motion to certify the levy.
Second.
Recommended.
Well, second. Is that the...
Maximum.
Certification, recommended preliminary. Okay, okay, sorry. Um, okay, so a motion by Lynn, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Beth.
Yep.
Um, on to discussion items. Um, item eight, A, budget development process. So as the school board went through the budget development process in the spring of two thousand seventeen, there were, um, discussions in subcommittee on, um, just process questions and if there were ideas to, you know, and there were ideas to strengthen or improve the overall process. So we talked about some things like forecasting, um, student enrollment numbers and, and things of, of that nature. So the idea would be to, um, there was a, a number of, of questions during the budget development, or during the budget process of last year from the committee. And so the idea was that we needed to actually do the process, and then we could have time to reflect and say, you know, what, or, or do we have all the information we want? Or is there different things that we would want to see changed? And that would be something that would be better to do outside of the cycle of the actual budget process. And so, um, I just wanted to bring this back because that was part of a conversation in the subcommittee and have a discussion at the board level, um, if there's any general feedback or thoughts, um, with the process. And then ideally, it would be referred back to the subcommittee so we can have conversations as a subcommittee outside of the budget cycle when Beth has to actually do the, do the work, so...
I guess, you know, I'm not on the finance committee, and sometimes I feel like, you know, even though the finance committee is coming and reporting what all you did, I'm feeling like I'm not as involved with the budgeting process, and I don't always know as much as when the whole board was doing it. So I'm not sure that I'm as comfortable with the fact that it's, a lot of the work is being done in the committee. I know it makes meetings go faster, but it's also, you feel like you're a little bit out of it when you're not part of that committee.
I guess I would agree, um, that it's worked, but I think as decisions were made going a number of years back, um, as decisions were made, um, in work session and then beyond, I felt a little bit more informed without having to ask for every single question, you know, wait, what does this mean and how does this work? So... And I would agree, as a new member to the board, not being part of that committee, I feel like I've had a, um, longer learning curve on trying to figure it all out because I haven't been involved in it, and I, and I haven't figured it all out.
Yeah.
But it did, it, I think it did make it hard for me to feel like I had all the information when we were making some decisions, or I wasn't as clear on what we were, what we're, what decision we were making and why, because I didn't have as much information.
I think the, just the toughest part of the, the process that I recall is that, you know, we have to pick a number of what our population is gonna be way before we know what our number of population is gonna be. And so that was the piece that was really sort of like, and then if we're deciding on a lower number than what it actually is, then that really can impact, you know, the budget, I guess, some of the discussion and decisions that we have to make going forward, and so...
Especially in a year when you don't have a lot of money coming in from the state. If you pick too low a number, then you're making cuts that you might not have to do if you use a number that's more appropriate.
And we tried to do that a little bit different, some variation this year, but it was, we were still less than what we ended up being at, so... There's probably some opportunity there, too. But, I mean, I think anytime financial decisions, I mean, it is good to sort of have a subcommittee, but I mean, that's really sort of the crux of our responsibility, so...
Right, I think.
To have everybody in the know is important.
Yeah, 'cause the other part of that is, most of all of our other committee work hinges on finances, too, right? So if you don't feel like you have a good understanding of the finances, that you need to go into a committee negotiations or whatever it might be. Um, who, who's on the, are you on finance?
Shannon and Kara and myself.
Okay, how much, how much duplication did you see with decisions and the work that you did in committee? And then what was brought to the board level? Were we asking a lot of the same questions? Was it an efficiency? What, and maybe back to you, Scott or Beth, too?
I honestly couldn't differentiate.
Okay. I'm just thinking, if it's almost a duplicate where we're doing a lot of that at a board level anyway, then as far as committee members...
And when we talked about the enrollment piece, I think we delved in a lot more with the committee versus when we came here and talked as a full board, 'cause then I feel like the board members could speak to what we talked about and why we made this decision, and then there wasn't a lot of questions from the other board members, as far as I remember.
Yeah, I think for me on that point, I don't know that I knew what questions to ask.
Okay.
You know, it is very new to me, so... And maybe even having two of three committee members that were new, first time figuring out that enrollment, because it is kind of a scary guess, you know? Maybe there was longer discussion, um, potentially, you know, the whys behind it, which isn't bad, but that maybe would have benefited us all to be on the same page as those discussions were taking place.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that, um, what I'm hearing is that, I'm hearing themes of things that were, that maybe we could improve as far as process. And one is the communication piece between what happens as committee work and what's happening coming back to the board. So the information, so you have some of that background information for your other committees, and so that we're making sure that we're all on the same page. I didn't, I felt like as a committee member, we weren't making decisions and not bringing it back to the board, but some of that, that information, that breadth of information that we received in subcommittee maybe wasn't necessarily coming back here. So that's kind of one theme of feedback. The other piece is the forecasting piece, um, and, and just kind of having a better understanding of that, so forecasting revenue, and...
Um, just as a question, so is the finance committee new? I mean, it, what I'm hearing is that this isn't how we've always done it. We've, I mean, is this a new thing that we dried out?
Less than three, four.
It's been a committee since I've been here.
Yeah, we've found a lot more in the last...
Yeah.
I guess, you know, part of my concern this last time around was because we were going into negotiations and decisions were made at the committee level about how much money would be going into salaries and, and that, that put us in a little bit of an awkward position to really debate that when we got here, you know, not knowing what the discussion had been at the committee level as to, you know, how much money do we need for negotiations? Or how does this all fit into the budget?
Which makes a lot of sense, 'cause that's obviously a big part of the budget process. So what I would like to do, oh, sorry, go ahead. Do you have more thoughts?
No, I just, no, I, I'm just wondering if, I don't, whatever past practice was five, six years ago, you need to go back to that, or being that we're more of a new group, and then, and then look at that and revisit. I don't know.
What, what I would like to see is this to go back to subcommittee, and we can have some of that discussion, um, because, um, the, the problem is nobody, wait, you're on negotiations as well as finance, and you're the only crossover?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And you were brand new.
Right. So I think, I think that there's some, you know, things that we could, process-wise, that we could work out, and if that, if the solution means having a full finance... Oh, do you love that, Beth?
That's fine.
Having a full finance process come to the board, if that's the solution, or if it's, um, referring from finance subcommittee to negotiation subcommittee, and you guys are meeting during the budget development cycle, not just during the negotiations timeframe, and you're kind of in on those decisions as well. I think that there's some solutions that we can come up with from a process standpoint to both provide more information to the full board and, and flesh out some of those issues. to both provide more information to the full board and, and flesh out some of those issues. But I think if we try to have all of this conversation without, tonight, within, try to solve, both come up, you know, identify the issues and then also solve the problems, we could, I don't know that we're going to get super far, but I would like to still see this conversation go to subcommittee. The feedback that you guys had is different feedback than I would have for the process, so it's helpful. And we can bring it back as a subcommittee and kind of come back with some of the thoughts that we had. And if there were additional themes that were brought forward as far as process changes, does that seem like a good solution? Are people comfortable with that? Because what, you know, what I'm hearing from you is having more information. So you're making sound decisions and, and negotiations having a say in some of those budget assumptions and.
And then I think even on the list of budget adds and, and subtracts or, you know, things we were, I think more that discussion went on evidently at the finance committee and sometimes some of the things, when I saw it, it's like, where'd that come from? You know, because we didn't have the background.
I don't know that that, I don't know that that.
Maybe.
Yeah, can you, do you know, do you have an example or? Because I don't know that we added anything without, with board approval. Would we have?
No, you didn't, but it's.
Without board approval?
No.
I think she.
On that wish list.
Better understanding of why.
Why is it on the list?
Why the things were added and, yeah, because we, because you're not part of the discussion, so.
Right, that wasn't part of finance committee though.
Was it?
No, but that's a good point that maybe that discussion, that's something to think about in our conversation. Because that, that list comes from administrators and obviously Scott, Scott and the team. So that doesn't go through finance. I mean, we may have referenced it, but.
Yeah, but we never really.
I don't think we ever had a discussion.
We were more about the census.
We must have looked at that sheet a thousand times this spring, so I don't remember which meetings it was at anymore.
That's the one I look for. That is the easiest for me to wrap my head around and understand where we're going, so. I, please don't change that. I mean, changing is fine if we tweak it, but I, like that document, I really appreciate.
Part of the big change was the principal, you know, and curriculum, that was sort of a big, and I don't, I don't think we.
We didn't talk about that, finance, or talk about that.
That had a big impact.
So you're going to go back to committee to say, bring it back to the board?
Yeah, I think, I think that we can have a conversation as a finance committee about solving some of these problems that were brought up at the board level. And then if there were other things that happened inside of committee that, you know, I want to have more, more of a defined process or more specific dates, not that it doesn't or does, but, but if there's specific suggestions that the committee would have. And I think as we talk about this as a committee, I think it'll become clear if this needs to come out of committee and come to the board or what solutions we can have to make sure that everybody's getting the information they need and we're not spending five hours, I mean, not going to take that long, but bogging down board meetings either.
And I get, without going to the meeting, I guess I would say for the people who are on the committee, I think we knew what was going on. The people that weren't on the committee didn't know what was going on. So I mean, I would say that let's just do it all together.
Okay.
I don't know, that's sort of.
That was kind of my question.
Was that your question? Okay.
So. Because I mean, if we're going to talk, I mean, there's not, the information where the questions are coming from are from the people who weren't, so I don't know if we're going to have any, we're going to have any great insight when the concerns are more.
Does it, I mean, is there a way to have a more clearly defined process from, not that there is a budgeting process, but having, you know, a process that's very clear so you can hear the updates, but you don't have to be part of the full discussion of everything we talked about? Or, or do you want to just move the process out of committee?
Yes, I would like to see it moved back to the board level for this year.
Okay.
And reevaluate it after that and see if you want to go back to committee or if there's value in the board level. Be worth a try.
And I would support whatever the people felt like they needed to get their, you know, if they felt like they needed a different report, we could do that. If we need to do it as a board, whatever you guys feel you need, I think that's what I would support, so.
And to Sunny's point about sometimes not even knowing exactly what question to ask.
Right, I mean, I feel like even now I couldn't tell you what I need because I don't know what I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I don't know what discussions are taking place that I'm not hearing.
Sure.
I'm trying to go back and look at the improvement reduction loss last year and see if there were some things in here that, you know, it's like.
Again, that's not, well, oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, that's.
Where I'm thinking that, I remember, I remember the feeling of, I don't know where that came from, I just can't see the, the exact items that were on it that, at the time that I had that feeling, but it was more, you know, this is one of the major responsibilities of the board and I just would feel more comfortable if the whole board was involved with the budget development process and a little bit less.
So what does that look like as a full board?
Well, you have a list of budget assumptions that we do in December. We would talk about what you want to do as far as enrollment and rolling forward revenue budgets and it's really hard at the moment without our contracts settled. And so then we have to talk about what we're going to project. I mean, those are the kind of conversations we're going to have, this overall picture.
I guess maybe my question was.
Work sessions.
And, okay, that's, that's what I was wondering is how, no, that's okay. I was very clear on my question.
I guess the question is, how many times did the finance committee meet and about how much time did you spend? If that's done at the board level, it's about that much additional time we have to spend as board minus the fact that when that came to the board.
There was a little bit of discussion.
There was some discussion, so it may add some amount of time to how much we're here in regular board meetings, but yet.
I think a lot of, I've gone, I was the only, well, you guys obviously have been through this process before, but only board member that, it was my, not my first time going through the budget process. And this year, it took a lot longer. There was a lot of questions about the process. So I would expect a lot of questions as far as, well, how can we do it this way? Or what does this mean or, so I think it's going to add to board length. But I think, again, to Lynn's point, this is one of our primary responsibilities and if it's, if it would make you more effective in other subcommittees, then I think that that's a good solution.
We could at least try for.
What are your, what are your thoughts? Because you've run it both ways.
Well, I just think you will invest more time in work sessions. You will take some other things off the work sessions and you'll spend more time on work sessions on it because that's where you can have the more open conversation about and ask a lot more questions and those kinds of things. So it just shifts it from committee to work session.
Do you have a strong opinion one way or the other?
The only thing I can, and part of it is simply the structure of the board. Part of the reason we started going to more and more committee work was because the board had been together for such a long time that you felt comfortable just, you know, having the discussions at, at the committee level and then reporting back out. And that's the reality of why we went more and more to committee level. We don't have that same board and we don't have the same understanding, so it makes sense to me that we would have more conversation at the board level.
Okay. So I'm hearing consensus that we would shift budget process to work sessions.
And I think in those discussions, you can certainly refer things back out if you want. I mean, if there are things, again, part of it, like the enrollment projection piece, we spent quite a bit of time at the board level last year of looking at enrollment projection, but that's one of the things in other years, we kind of went back to committee and said, okay, we know the broader parameters, let the committee kind of work out what they would recommend and then bring that back to the full board. And so I think you're just flip-flopping the process to have the discussion and then say, these are the pieces that we want the finance committee to work on and then we'll bring it back to everybody.
So does the calendar need to be amended to the responsible, or is it, say, I'm just saying, it's the school board, school board, are there?
I think a lot of this calendar is not, is possibly not going to happen in the same order based on negotiations. Like I don't anticipate giving you an updated budget in December if our contracts aren't settled. It's a waste of, it's a complete waste of my time. I'm just going to be self-serving on this to revise a whole budget and then go back again and do it later. You want to wait until your contracts are settled. I mean, there's, you won't have a formal budget, but at least we still have an idea of where we're at, even if you don't amend it. But, yeah, so some of the dates and things in here might not line up very well.
Okay, so there's a number of, let's see, I'm just going back to some of the comments that people had. I think refer, I think we keep the subcommittee intact. We do a lot of, we kind of flip the work, as Scott says, and do a lot of the work in work session. And then some of these questions as far as, you know, or, you know, opportunities to grow, you know, being in the know and having a full understanding for being on negotiations committee, some of that, it just solves that. Revenue forecasting and stuff, those are conversations that will naturally occur as a committee when we get to it. Is there, do we have to just kind of go through this process as a group and, and solve problems as far as the process as we go or make note of them so next year we can reflect on that? Because there were a number of things that finance committee uncovered as far as, you know, certain information or things that they wanted for process change. Is that, do we go through this as a group now and work through it? Because, because it got to a point through finance committee that it was like, we have to actually do the process, not just talk about how things are working. So I just want to prevent us from that similar situation. What are your thoughts? I mean, because you were on the committee. Because I know that there were.
I hear what you're saying, so especially with somebody new.
Right, so there were questions like, you know, mid-year approvals for like lacrosse or something? And is that, should that be defined as part of the budget process? You know, is that something that we should say, you know, once the budget is set, we can't add it? Because those are things that don't have, they're not emergency type things, conversations like that.
You want us to have those right now?
No, I don't want us to have those now. I'm just, we, as a committee, there was a lot of, you know, you know, questions about the process and how we can, you know, as a new committee, make the process better. And so my, my concern is that we would have a full, we would not make changes, which if it's going to full committee, I don't know that it should, but that we get to, we're, you know, in February and Beth has to run, she has to move on through the process and we're held up as a board because we're saying, well, how could, you know.
Well, couldn't, couldn't you share at the next work session what those concerns were at the committee level and we can say, yep, we, you know what I mean?
Well, that would have to go to subcommittee then and have that conversation. Because a lot of it was just tabled last year. A lot of the conversations were just tabled.
But couldn't, the three of you that were on the subcommittee, couldn't you share with us at the work session what some of those concerns were? Not that.
I think we'd have to meet again and talk about it.
Who's all on the subcommittee?
Shannon.
It's just, there's no other staff, or I mean, no, I mean, the two of them.
I'm sorry.
So it's just the five of you on that committee? Okay.
That helps me, I guess.
Why would you have to meet again to figure out what the issues were to be able to bring them back? I'm really confused right now.
I am too.
Okay, so through the process, there were a lot of questions and it was, it got to a point where it was like, well, we have to not answer these questions, we have to move through the process. I mean, is that how you saw it?
But couldn't we just, couldn't we just?
Not really, no.
Well, there were a number of times that that question was raised, like, especially in terms of adding activities. Is it, is it appropriate to do that? And I don't think we answered that question other than there seems to be a general consensus. I mean, we didn't take board action to say we will never act, add another activity during the year, but there's a general consensus that if it hasn't been a part of the budget development process, if it hasn't gone through our list of things, it shouldn't be coming to us in mid-year. But there are a number of those types of questions that didn't get a formal answer in the discussion.
I think you alluded to, like, there's different kinds of budgeting and we're sort of doing, I can't even remember the descriptor, but, and you said, well, we're not going to change because this is the kind that we're doing or we're used to, we can't do that in the middle of the year. And I can't really speak to what the options are, but you talked a little bit about.
It really depends on, and I don't know the terms, but one budget is based on you start with your budget from the year before and you go, what are we adding and subtracting? And then there's some school districts that start zero-based. It's like, okay, let's build the budget from zero, or how many teachers do we need? How many of this do we need? And you just build everything. We've traditionally pretty much gone with, let's start with last year's budget, look at what needs to be added, what could be subtracted.
Yeah, so I know there was a little discussion about that and that's, that was more of like Kara was saying, we just sort of had to go forward because this is what's been done and those are great questions, but those will have to be talked about another time and.
So couldn't our first work session or our, well, not first, our next work session or whatever work session is appropriate, couldn't we have that discussion?
Wouldn't make sense to me.
Like, this is a process, does this make sense still?
Right, so the three of you and the two of you can tell us, you know, what the questions were, what the things were that were put on hold and then we can just talk through them in that work session.
You know what?
I think to Kara's point, it was just to review what those questions were so that the committee is prepared to have that conversation, but I think that's what you were saying, Kara.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to pull my notes because it was, it was from a while ago.
Can you just bring?
I can just bring my notes and we can have that conversation, absolutely.
I mean, I guess, if you guys want to.
If you guys want to meet, go ahead. No, no, I was, I was not.
I don't want to stand in a meeting.
I was trying to help, I was trying to help you from having a meet.
I've been here every day this week, so we need to meet again.
You know, using that adding an activity as an example, it definitely has budgetary complications and I get that piece. But then we need to look at our policy of adding extracurricular and talk about it. So I can see where a lot of that conversation would have taken place in those meetings, but I could see where they, as things would come up, it maybe would be shifted to another, either another committee or at a board level too, so.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is that we have a discussion on, here's the budget process as a full board and does this work? And are we all on the same page? So some clarity on the process. And then we can move from there as a full board. And I'll pull up my notes and the rest of the committee can.
You have to make a motion on that?
No, no action, we're in discussion.
Can't do that.
Sorry.
Okay, so.
Let's ship it back for an action item.
Okay.
So, are you guys comfortable moving on from that discussion? And I'll, I'm, I'll add that to my notes, so Scott and I can, if we need to flush it out more, future agenda items. I'm assuming you guys are okay with that?
Yeah, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, back to the agenda. All right, action, our discussion item B, policy consideration. We're on second reading for policy speaking of, or no, this is not the same policy. Eight sixteen staffing extracurricular activities, thank you Beth. Six ten, six ten leave of absences. Pardon me?
I was, I was just on six ten, I didn't see another one.
Oh, sorry, yeah. And so this is the second reading, no formal action is recommended. And they're expected to return for third and final reading under the consent agenda. Were there any additions or changes that were noted? I mean, obviously we all read the policies. I appreciated the changes to the policies and I didn't see any need for change, so. All right, policy consideration. The policy committee is recommending the removal of policy six twelve, prayer at teacher workshop from the policy manual. At one time in district history, this policy may have been needed, but the guidance is no longer required. Was there any discussion on that? I don't know if you have, do you want to provide background or?
I think the discussion was just that we're not praying at teachers, teacher workshops, so it wasn't necessary to have.
we're not praying at teachers, teacher workshops, so it wasn't necessary to have prayer.
I think the, some of the conversation was that it was a carryover from when it went from St. Boniface to the Recorrie Public School District.
I was just saying, formally as a district, we are not-
Yeah, but I don't think that's the policy you need either, I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay, so you're recommending removal, so that's actually, action that has to be taken at the next-
I'm assuming it would come back, come back at the next meeting?
It'd be in the consent agenda next time around that that would be taken.
Is there, I mean, is there anything more that the board wants to see or questions before it would come back as either an action item or in the consent agenda? Not for me, okay. All right, we can move on. Um, social studies trips. There's a couple of neat trips that were detailed in our board packet. Sorry, we have-
Hello.
Hi.
And Julie was handing in some information.
This is Mr. Sauer.
Okay, Mr. Sauer.
She's so busy, she doesn't even know what she's doing.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Sauer. Yeah, you can sit up.
Right up to the table?
Yeah, perfect, yes.
And I got some stuff, I'll just hand out right away.
Okay.
All right, so the first sheet is kind of just, it's just a recap of some of the insurance policies from World Classrooms.
Thank you.
Which is the organization of the educational tours. I'll just come back around here.
Thanks.
And then what I did, and then what I did is I took the information out of what each student is going to get as kind of an introductory kind of meeting that we're having on Wednesday for the seventh and eighth graders. I just copied it, so I'll come back around with those. So basically what's in there is when our meetings are, itineraries, kind of the day-to-day stuff. And then the actual signup process, what the student needs to, to sign up, yeah? All right, let me just glance out and see if she, she's looking at the sheets. There we are.
Thanks.
All right, so, uh, this is my first time kind of doing something like this, I handed out all the sheets.
Oh, great, great. Hi. Do you want to just, do you, do the two of you want to just quick introduce yourselves to the board? I don't know if everybody knows.
Uh, I am Derek Sauer, middle school, mostly eighth grade, but I do some seventh and sixth grade also, so.
I'm Julie Woods, I teach at the high school. I teach, right now I teach ninth grade civics, college psychology, and I teach seniors economics.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys can, take a seat, yeah, make yourself comfortable.
Relax.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and then the third member of our kind of written trust, as you want to call it, is Darcy Mantha. She's a second-year, uh, social studies. Middle school, high school split, so.
Derek's probably going to go over the trip a little bit, but I just wanted to, um, address briefly that we have, especially for the new board members, that we have kind of a long history at Recorrie of, um, a Washington DC trip on a sometimes yearly basis, sometimes semi-yearly basis. It had, I, I took that trip over in two thousand and two. Prior to that, Ron Clark had done that for at least a dozen years, I believe. And so we have kind of a long history that we're pretty proud of, that we've taken our, um, kids on that. Traditionally, that high, that Washington DC trip had been a high school trip. For most of its existence, it had been for seniors in high school. For several years when I took it in the early two thousands, including some of Mr. Stasko's kids, I took over twenty-some seniors, which is over a tenth of the senior class would sign up and go on that trip and the whole deal. The trend that I saw while I was going on that trip, just since I was doing it from two thousand and two to, I guess the last time I went was fifteen, I think, spring of, maybe the spring of sixteen. Was a trend towards, um, middle schoolers being the kids that were out on the Washington DC experience. In fact, the last year I went with high school kids, we, we also changed our trip to allow like ten, eleven, twelve to go on the trip. Uh, we couldn't even hook up with the bus that had other high school kids on it. It was all middle school kids that were going. And just from my perspective, and I think from the perspective of the students, that changed the dynamics of the desirability of it a little bit. They do, most of these trips, and I've used a couple of different programs, and this is a new program for us, do have some interaction involved with other high schools that are out there. That's usually one of the selling points of the trip, even from an educator's perspective, as you meet students from other states and interact with them. And that was a little less desirable, for instance, on that last trip I went on, we were with some students from Vermont. But my youngest student along was in tenth grade and their oldest was eighth grade. And it just didn't, it didn't create the same kind of, um, experience in terms of getting to know each other and having a little bit of fun together on the bus as we traveled around and that sort of thing. So anyway, that's just a little background about, about why we're thinking, when, when Derek talks about the trips a little bit, why we're thinking and requesting to you to maybe move our, uh, Washington DC experience to a middle school experience. Because that, that is, and that's also, um, what most of the different trip coordinators I have talked to seem to be pushing as well, is that they're seeing more middle schoolers out there from around the country doing that trip. From our perspective as educators and mine as a ninth grade civics teacher, it, it, it does work. I, I see pluses in going at any age, right? I mean, we should do everything when we're fifty, sixty, and seventy years old, then we'd really appreciate it, you know, so. Of course, I would love all high school seniors to do everything, I wish seniors could take every class. And, you know, I mean, so I understand, there's, there's total value in older kids doing the trip. But, but since it is a trend that goes younger, and I think that is probably because nationwide, a course like civics is taught primarily at the freshman level. I, I believe that's true, not just in Minnesota. So we do see, um, from our social studies perspective, that that would really feed in well, um, to students coming into ninth grade. Um, in fact, these middle schoolers that we're going, that we would love to, um, promote this trip towards would actually be in eighth and ninth grade by the time they went on the trip. They're in seventh and eighth grade now, we would propose the trip, allow time, um, to, to pay for the trip and, and build towards that trip. Um, but they would actually be in eighth and ninth grade when they attended the trip, which would work good as a precursor to their civics class and as an addition to their civics class while they are currently freshmen. So, we like the, we like the timeframe from that perspective. And we're also proposing a, a different trip for our high school students that we think is, well, different, but equally as educational and might be exciting to them as well. I had a little, throughout the years, I've had a little harder draw, I could tell, on getting high schoolers to sign up for the Washington DC trip, for whatever reason that might be. Um, the last one I had some pretty good numbers on was a inauguration trip. And that was a special trip in January of two thousand and twelve, we went on that trip. So that was, got quite a big draw, but, um, but anyway. Derek, I just want to clarify, the, the material that you got,
because this is the actual forms that the kids are getting, they haven't actually sent the New York information to us. Um, it's still in the works, because that meeting is a little bit later than this meeting. So what you're getting as a model is the first trip that is proposed. Um, so if you wanted more information, I can easily, um, forward that to you. And the, the initial paperwork that was sent in, I don't know who gets that or where that goes. Uh, but there is an itinerary for the New York in that, so if you wanted to look at that. Yeah, yep, so, okay, so there is, there is some New York information. You know, where I, where I come from is, um, you know, going on trips for me when I was younger was, it was a big deal for me, because it was something other than stats and facts and, and a bunch of book material that I needed to memorize. You know, I, I didn't get it much in the school aspect of it, it was more outside of the school. Um, so I figured if I can try to help nurture that, I want to be a part of it.
Well, and to your point there, um, I, I, I could honestly say, and then Derek was lucky, right? Derek would say he was lucky that his family was able to take those kind of trips. Myself personally, with a large family, I'm not, it's not as easy for me to, um, afford to bundle up, um, six kids and take them on a, a trip like that. Um, so my own children too, uh, and I think a lot of students that I've had, uh, for many, it's their first time flying. Um, it, it's their, it's their first real, um, experience doing maybe a kind of an educational trip beyond something like camping or something like that. I mean, it really is, we see it as really opening a door for our kids and, um, just in case those of you that are new didn't realize quickly before Derek talks about it, this is a trip that is, we're coming for permission to take the trip and for the school district to support the trip. Uh, but it is a trip that is funded by the students in totality, from start to finish.
Yeah. Um, so the proposal would be, um, a DC trip in March and then a New York trip at the, or, in March also. Um, we tried to strategically place it in between potential ends and starts to sporting seasons. Um, so the middle school base trip would be kind of right at the end of the, um, winter season. And then we tried to sneak in the ten through twelve New York trip before the spring season starts. Which we think will hopefully get a bigger job by that, because that is a, a big thing these days, is that if you miss sporting, uh, practices and events, the, the mindset is that you might drop down a notch, which is unfortunate, but that's, that's kind of how society is. So what we were proposing for spring nineteen, so they have sixteen months, um, to pay for their trip, and I'll just come out right away. It would, the only payment the district would have would be subpay for, um, the three of us, if we decide all three of us are going. And then that, that's based off of numbers-wise, which our payment, our trip would be paid for, um, through the World Classrooms. There's no busing involved, no food involved, um, from the district's aspect. It's just subpay for us missing the one or two days, so.
Yeah, would you plan to travel over a weekend?
Yes, so it'd be like a Thursday to Sunday, would be what it was. So, that's kind of just the basics of it. Um, DC-wise, we're, we're looking at, um, actually both, sorry. We're looking at like a three-day, or three-night, four-day trip. All hotel is paid for, um, events are paid for, and you can kind of see that in your, your itinerary, day one through day four. Um, and that is not set in stone. If there was something that we decided as educators, maybe would benefit our kids, we can, we've already discussed this, we can kind of pick and prod what we would want to put in there. If we didn't want to go to the US Capitol Tour, we could substitute something else. And it could be something from, an, an art exhibit that's, we find out is going to be that weekend. It's, it's pretty flexible in terms of that, so. It's your, your pretty standard educational tour, it's not just go, 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 and all you're doing is looking and taking pictures. They actually implement lessons into it, um, where we actually get a chance to step back and kind of witness what the kids are learning. And they provide tour guides and lesson plans, um, and even lesson plans after the fact that we can bring back with us and put in the classroom. So that was kind of a plus for us. A lot of tours these days are just in it for the money and kudos to them if they can get people to, to buy in. But, from our end, we want, we want the kids to actually learn something when they're there, so.
Do you have a limit? I mean, is, is there a certain amount, or so many kids need to sign up to be able to do it, and then only so many people can sign up? Do you know what I'm saying?
Um, they, they said there is no minimum, but then that reduces down how many like adults would get included into it. So like, for example, if we had thirty kids sign up for the DC trip, then roughly three of us would be able to go.
They want roughly a one to ten ratio.
Yeah, but it's not saying that I couldn't go with five kids.
Okay, so what if you have more than thirty, then you'd look for more parents?
Exactly. We'd look for chaperones or probably adult, other chaperones through the school district or even, you know, I don't know, um, in the past, we have utilized, um, chaperones or, you know, people as well, too, I think.
So, just kind of a-
And they provide, they do provide, you know, a couple of chaperone guides along with. In fact, on this trip, um, Mr. Stasko or others on the board that have been around a long, I have to see our other trips. One of the difference, the cost is roughly the same, I would say, especially if you factor in a little bit of inflation as the other trips, except this trip does also include, um, busing, um, transportation from the high school to the airport, back to the high school. So it is, it's nice, one less factor. We do have a busing issue in terms of getting buses and having transportation, and that was a little bit of a, a little dip challenge for me last time I went. And they do have someone that, you know, takes us all the way through airport to airport. Where in the past, um, we had someone that met us in Washington DC, but the rest of the airport kind of struggles, which is kind of the scary time of just having thirty people and, or fifty people and yourself is a little daunting, but in this case, we have someone really experienced, and we go through group ticketing and all that kind of thing.
And then another positive of kind of splitting it up is that the ten through twelve wouldn't necessarily be just the social studies aspect of it. The New York trip adds in like a Broadway show and then art exhibits as well. So we could also push it as kind of like a co-ming, co-mingling subjects.
Right.
I guess with art and social studies. So we could try to capture some more students instead of just, no, this is just for the social mind. It's really for anybody. Hopefully, we can get more that way. Um, we do have potential with things like the Arlington Cemetery, um, Darcy has some connections with, uh, through her fiancee. So there might be some more behind-the-scenes stuff that could be a positive. You know, the Holocaust Museum is something that when I was a sixth grader, I went through in about an hour. And then I sat on a park bench outside the museum and waited for four more hours while my family went through it. I didn't appreciate it at, at that age. I was just on a trip. And so that's something that I kind of want to gear those kids, like, you know, stop and actually read this. Because this, you know, something pretty important, so.
Soak that in a lot better.
Yeah.
So would the, would the idea or the intent be that, you know, based on response to this, that you would start offering it annually?
Yes.
So that your new seventh graders would have an opportunity?
Right.
Or even maybe seventh graders this year think, I'm not quite ready, but in eighth grade, they say, oh, now I want to try it?
They could catch it the next year.
Yeah.
Um, and so something that I've discussed with World Classrooms is we're gearing the DC to the seventh and eighth graders this year, which will be eighth and ninth grade next year. Now, they, they talked to me about size of school, interest in the past, what have some numbers been for school districts about our size? And we actually reduced it a grade on this initial kickoff, who get this? Because if numbers are high, we didn't want to have like seventy kids going. Now we have to kind of think about, oh, how do we, how do we do this?
What you're, what you're saying is, initially, we had talked about allowing, opening it up to sixth graders so they could go on the trip as a seventh, eighth, or ninth grader.
Right.
Yeah.
But we decided, we anticipate that perhaps we could get quite a bit of interest.
Yeah.
And so we thought, especially for the first time through, we would just open it up to seventh and eighth graders who would be going on the trip as eighth and ninth graders.
Yeah, and they always said the option is open if numbers aren't as big as we thought. In the spring, having another little informational thing for sixth graders this year.
Reach back to sixth, but I don't anticipate that one need to.
Don't anticipate us either, cause I just had a little feel in a couple of classes last week. I just said, hey, who would be interested in going to a trip? And I kind of explained what would be the, the contents of it, and there was, just in one class, there was like fifteen kids that were like blown back, like, that'd be awesome, we would love to do that.
Yeah.
You know, now, obviously, money, the middle schooler mind is like, yeah, that'd be awesome, I'd want to pay for it. Well, in all reality, that fifteen probably goes down to about three or four of those kids in reality are able to go. But I did some quick math, you know, if a grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle donates anywhere from a hundred to two hundred dollars, your hundred and twelve per month goes all the way on, down to like ninety-nine dollars a month. So if we push it that way, I think the students would be attracted to it.
Fundraising opportunities?
We talked about that, we have done, or you've done some in the past.
I've done a lot in the past. And, and we certainly could, um, we're, we're, I think with our goal of trying to extend the payment timeframe, we're trying to get away from that a little bit. Um, especially when you're running, um, trips with large groups, fundraising opportunities, um, end up being a lot of work for a little bang for the buck, because those dollars get spread among a lot of faces and there's a lot of things, just, I'm pretty experienced with it, there's a lot of things that look really good and sound really good, but and frankly, there were, when I first did the trip, there was a lot less fundraising going on, period, to be honest. And now we're just- And now we're just inundated with it, right, Mr. Stasko?
Yeah.
Like constantly. Um, so I anticipate having that be less, that, that, as a, initially, I felt that was like my, almost my number one purpose during the trip. I mean, I really gave my all to the fundraising for students. I, I remember Mr. Stasko's air with his kids, we went down, we were trained as Metrodome workers. It's okay, I can believe that I did that, but um, we took, I guess gas was cheap or something, we were like going down there like a dollar twenty a gallon or something and we would work at the Metrodome and then my husband and I were like trained as Metrodome stand supervisors and they really had you, like, you had to balance that stand down to the nickel or they could take everything out of your pay, it was just like, wow, we were there, it's like one in the morning, like trying to figure that out. Um, but, so I mean, I know what, what fundraising takes, not to say, I think we would definitely perhaps do some and um, especially with our um, Washington DC trip, the, some of the civic groups have really been happy to partake in donating to us, although like, you know, again, I've seen costs go up on these trips and basically all the donations go down. You know, even they're strapped, I think they're even asked for more donations from other people, I get the feeling, I mean, groups that would throw out a couple thousand dollars to us in two thousand two, now give five hundred or a thousand, you know, so, but those are, I think that, that is a trip that they do feel really good about supporting, like, like I'm talking about like the Legion or the Lions Club, I mean, I think it fits their mission. Um, so, not opposed to it, I, but I will be honest in saying that I don't know that it would be um, something I-
High value.
Feel, yeah, high value or worth my time, I don't know that I want necessarily add this on as another thing we're fundraising for at recording. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
So this is in discussion because we're not obviously making a decision tonight-
Right.
-to come back-
Right.
... to, so, you know, are there questions?
One of my questions is the fact that you're trying to travel in March and New York and Washington both have had snowstorms in March, what happens to the investment if um, the weather interferes? What's your guarantee with this company?
That's a good, I guess we should look into that. I was only kind of going on my own past experience in that I, um, I personally pushed the trip, um, the, the DC trip back a little bit into early April, just as, as years went on, just because I personally like a little warmer weather and the cherry blossoms are out, it's just a little bit more attractive. Um, but Mr. Clark, in my early years, we had always done March, basically for the, for trying to be as inclusive as we could, especially with those older students and respectful of their time with their varsity athletics and not wanting to interfere with a state basketball run if we by chance were doing that and baseball getting started. And we had, we had very good luck weather wise. So I mean, I, I think we should, we should look into what kind of guarantees they make, like, I mean, you're basically saying if the trip were to be canceled because we couldn't fly there?
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think they're basically like, oh, if there happens to be snow on the ground, we're still going to slog around.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, but they've had some major snowstorms in March the last couple of years.
That's worth looking into, I would think they have some kind of policy if they had to actually cancel the trip.
Yeah, and I mean, just based off of, you know, what I've looked on their websites and, and some of the discussions is that they're almost a hundred percent guaranteed money back type deal.
But that's worth-
I just have trends that are in Washington DC and I know that-
Well, even just rain too can dampen everything.
Yeah, a snowstorm that we have here, we deal with in two days, will shut down Washington DC for a week because-
That's a good question, want to make a little note of that, Derek?
Yep.
Just to ask him?
Will do.
So we can look into what kind of cancellation policy they have.
That'd be great, and if we could have that back-
Yeah.
-for the board packet for, for next time.
Okay.
I have a question though, so we're not making a decision today, but you're handing these out next week and there's an informational session out on October eleventh.
Yes.
Is there enough time? I mean, when's our next meeting?
Not until-
October nine?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, October ninth.
So you're going to hand this out next week?
The dates a little bit, huh?
But-
You're going to hand this out next week and say this might happen? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or is there a way for us to do something tonight? I know it's not under action items, but-
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't brought to me that, that um, through this process that it would have to go in as an action, it was just more so, this is what, this is what we're doing.
I think policy actually says out of state travel has to be approved.
Um, and because this is not, it's not a-
It's not a school sponsored event, really.
It's not a school sponsored event because it's all outside, but the reason why we have to come here is because we are pushing it to students while they're in school.
And parents are going to see it as a school sponsored trip. And missing those at school, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I mean, like, if you go through, I know you don't want to go through it, but if you go through the, the legal side of it on the back, I mean, it's, everything in here basically states by signing up for this, you're waiving anything with the school at all.
Right.
Um, and so in my mind, if, if we really had to, um, I would just have to do it outside of, of school time and that's just inconvenient, but I mean, it's-
I guess where I'm coming from is I think this is a great, I think it's a great opportunity for our students and so if there's anything that we can do tonight to give them the go ahead to move forward and meet the timeline.
Yeah, and I do apologize if we didn't follow the-
No, no.
-the timeframe and that's a misunderstanding on our part. And the only reason we were trying to get it going as soon as possible is to extend the payment plan even longer, that's all. I mean, it isn't something that had to be done in October, but-
Yeah, I just-
But it makes sense.
Yeah, I wanted to just say thank you for all the information, I appreciated all the insurance pieces.
Yeah.
I, when I was growing up, I was very lucky to be able to travel a lot with my family, my mom worked for Northwest, we would like pack our own food, so we were budget travelers, but I got to see, you know, things that changed who I am as a person. And so your mission for this is just, you know, it's touching to me because this is exactly, this is, you know, part of the reason why I am who I am. And, you know, I got to do service learning trips as well in high school and so um, seeing the world from a bigger place than um, some kids have the opportunity to, to do naturally in their own families for whatever circumstances, I think is an awesome thing that you guys are doing. So I'm grateful that this opportunity exists for our district, um, it's especially cool that it's such a strong tradition, that um, there's just a, a little piece of, of timeline and I, do we need to, for, from a policy standpoint, historically, we have approved trips. Is this different in how this is structured that we wouldn't approve it or is the expectation that it would come back next time?
No, historically, you just hear the information one time and approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Especially getting the answers on things like what cancellation policies is.
Yeah, and that could be something I can call them and crap tomorrow.
He could have that tomorrow.
I mean, and the, and the thing is, is like, so they sent us uh, this information early and it had different dates on it. We were planning on doing it earlier than that, well then, I found out about having to come here to present to the board, so then I just called them, I said, here's the deal, we have a little bit of a snag, can you send me another box, you know, in a week? And I got it, you know, today. So, I mean, I don't think it's-
If we had to change the date?
Yes, if that is something that-
If we had to, we can, I mean, it's a lot of, there, we print quite a bit of paper, I think, but-
Yeah.
But we certainly could.
If you are comfortable with the information you have, you certainly can act at one time or processes typically to give you opportunity to hear it and then react at the next meeting.
So then my, so then my question is, because it is two separate trips, would you want us to come back when we were to get like the information for New York and then, I know we kind of presented it together and it's going to look very, very similar.
Same company?
Same company, yeah.
From, from my perspective, I guess, I would just as soon to tell you guys, I mean, my vote would be to go ahead with it, um, get the answer to the question about the insurance. If there's an issue with that, then, you know, we're, I'm, I'm guessing that an organization like this-
Yeah.
-has insurance for, if there's weather that prevents-
Or calamity of the trip not happening on their part, yeah.
Yeah, um, but to Kara's point, I think even families that maybe can or do do some traveling, there's, there's something to be said about students going without their parents, without their siblings or whoever it may be, whatever family members it be and kind of being, you know, responsible for-
Right.
-themselves a little bit.
Anna Maria, do you, you're nodding your head, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Well, um, two years ago, I went on a student trip to Costa Rica with a Spanish class and it was like, I've gone, I travel all the time with my family, I actually have family in Europe overseas, so we go all the time in summer to visit. And going with my friends, like as a student experience solely, I think was my favorite trip I've ever been on, just because you experience it with people at the, like at your age that you, like you just relate to them, so everything you're learning is near to them as it is to you. And it's like a different idea, like it's Spanish versus history, but it's all, it all comes back to like learning as a student outside of the school, you know?
It's not your parents telling you.
Yeah.
Well, I've taken hundreds of kids and all different types of students, from, you know, our, our athletes to not, to just, I mean, all different friend groups and I've never had one kid say that they regretted the money that it costs or the time that we spent, I mean, they just have all been so positive about the experience and it's just-
It's great.
Really, really been well received.
Um, Scott, do you have a recommendation for how to proceed? Because obviously there's a timeframe piece, but we need to vote on it, but I don't think we can, I mean, it's in discussion.
Mr. Jensen and I have both talked about it, he is supportive of the trip, I thought two meeting timeframe was simply because of our typical practice, you are certainly welcome to act tonight.
We have in the past, to prove things.
And you have in the past.
At the first discussion.
We've had, we've had, I think we've had this before where we, the timeframe was tighter and we needed to approve it, so.
So whatever we have to do to make that happen, I would make a motion to approve the trips.
That's what you need to do.
Even though it's under discussion, I didn't know if we had to pull it out of discussion, move it some, whatever. Whatever the formality is, my motion would be to approve both.
Okay, so motion by Sunny, second by Lynn, hearing any further discussion?
I have one, yeah, just contingent on that.
The insurance.
The insurance that, yeah.
The cancellation policy.
Yes, I will ma, I will amend my motion to approve it contingent on insurance.
Okay. For um-
Weather cancellation.
Yeah.
Or for whatever, refund policy.
Whatever type of, or they would have to cancel the trip.
But it's not, I mean, if it's raining there-
No.
-you go and you experience it.
Right.
No, but if you can't travel.
Yeah.
In the trip being canceled on their side or-
I mean, I mean, in the past, there've been issues with um, flus where they didn't want people flying and, you know, lots of reasons were-
Oh, I'm sure, like the first year I went towards the fall of nine eleven, if you had scheduled your trip, but then to September of that year, I would imagine it was probably canceled to Washington DC, I have a feeling.
Right.
They were even, for a minute, because we were going in the spring, they were like, oh, I wonder if, you know-
Right.
-we're going to be able to go, yeah, that kind of thing.
Yep, right.
So we'll look into that, who should Derek forward that to?
Yeah, should that be just Hannah?
Just Scott.
Okay, so an amended motion by Sunny.
Second.
Second by Lynn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your-
And thank you to our new young teachers for carrying on the tradition, that's always appreciated.
You know, if you need chaperones, the board members have-
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
First dibs, you should have left for that in your menu.
You're by the Hamilton in New York.
Oh, yeah.
I'll chaperones.
They didn't quite say Hamilton.
I had to push my mom on line, she's like, I'll even pay, I don't even care.
Maybe your mom and I should go to New York then.
We're going to think about it, okay, we'll be talking about that nice issue.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you need any more information, just let me know or let Scott know and we can get, get ahold of you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anna Maria, for your feedback too, that was really, that was really good. Okay, uh, moving on in discussion items, superintendent job description, so as part of the evaluation committee, um, we developed the process and part of the MSBA recommended process is that we review the job description. However, the, the process does detail this being, happening sooner in the cycle, this is, we're still kind of getting our sea legs with the process, obviously, things have been pushed back with, with everything that's transpired, but it is um, here for discussion. It's the first time since I've been on the board that we've, I've even publicly seen the job description. Have you guys looked, I mean, you've obviously looked at it because you probably wrote it, I don't know.
But it, um, at one point, the job description was used directly in the evaluation process, so.
Okay.
Goes back a few years, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And, yeah, okay.
So what, what is our goal tonight to, because I kind of, I feel like I need a little more time to look at it in comparison, I mean, I got, I'm not asking my question very well, but is our goal to look at this, compare it to other job descriptions, make sure that we're in line with and that it indicates what we want this position to be responsible for or what?
I think that's, that's a really good question. Um, our process dictates that we talk about it, but I don't know that there's, um, that it doesn't specify what for. To me, I mean, I think it's to make the intent from MSBA, from, and Lucy and Scott, you were there as well, my impression from MSBA, the intent was there to make sure it was still, there's, everything was still relevant on it, that there wasn't a piece that was irrelevant anymore or that needed to be added. For example, if we added a um, HR department or something, it would, it would affect the job description, um.
So, does MSBA have model job descriptions or-
That's a good question.
Is that, is that part of the sessions you want to or not?
I don't recall that.
Okay.
Being part of our training, I, maybe they do. It's a good question.
There wasn't one as part of the materials, but-
There was not?
No, because they handed out the competencies, not necessarily a job description.
Description, right. So I guess what I would ask is if it would be possible between now and our next work session for you, Scott, to maybe pull some other sample job descriptions and then we could talk about it at a work session?
Yeah. Does this need to go to negotiations? I think I actually saw that on the agenda, I'm not on there right now.
Um, oh, yeah, for negotiations or policy.
Oh, I would say it in negotiations as opposed to policy. Let's see. Sorry. Policy, those two negotiations, it's all pretty best.
Yay. So Lynn's going to vote for policy, no?
That's my direction I was headed.
So negotiation committee is personnel committee, right?
That's why it fits there, I'm not trying to help you in policy and just, that's the logic.
It doesn't really matter, same, same people except for Lisa.
Except I get to come to the meeting then. But that's the logical to me and that would be um, where I think that first view of if there's going to be a comparison-
Yeah.
-of descriptions could happen and then come back.
Yep, that makes sense to me.
Yep, and then we can also look at MSB, I mean, you, you spoke to that, but also specifically looking to see if MSBA has a model policy or a model job description.
Yep.
So-
Awesome.
Okay, boom.
Not, not tomorrow.
No.
Not at tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
We have a few other things to do first, but put it on our list of things to do.
All right. Was there any other discussion with that? Are we comfortable, is there more feedback that people had? I mean, I read it and without a frame of reference, I thought, oh, seems fine. I mean, but I think it's important to take a deep dive and make sure it's current and.
It's been seventeen years.
Yeah.
We can get some other ones to look at, just do some comparisons.
Okay, wonderful. All right, referred to negotiations. Next up administrative and board reports. We have a number of administrative reports from Joel and Stephanie Hellman, Chris Barker from Food Service, to look at. Were there any questions for Scott or anything that anybody wanted to pull up?
The one, the one thing that Chris wanted to make sure that you saw is on page one or two at the end of her report is an update on the summer feeding program. So just so you're aware that on the other highlights part, she does go back and take a look at what we did this summer and give you some information about it. So it just says that at breakfast one day, the record day was three hundred and twenty-eight, at breakfast three hundred and two at lunch, the average of two hundred and thirty for breakfast and a hundred and ninety for lunch. So again, it's just good information on the summer program.
And can you remind me now, is, was it the summer program that we're, we're not locked into for five years?
Five years, correct.
And is that something from a budget standpoint? Because I, from a budget standpoint, that breaks even or comes close?
Yeah, it, it actually probably makes a little bit of money in terms of when you process all the things because of the amounts that we charge. And then again, there's some reimbursement pieces and so.
And then how.
At least breaks even.
How does this differ from this, okay, the lunch during, or the breakfast during school? That's not free? I don't remember how it works. Or is that free too? And then how does that, how is that funded?
Beth probably could give us a lot better detail in terms of that, but the breakfast program is free.
Okay.
In, in that we can offer it across based on the number of free and reduced meals within the district because we get reimbursement for the free and reduced meal count. But that allows it to break even, so it's no cost.
And that's the, the first and second chance breakfasts?
I'm not sure if it covers both of them. I don't recall.
Okay.
I thought you did, but I don't recall.
All right, so budget comparison report. Beth provided us with the budget to actual comparison as well as her budget to actual comparison notes explaining any revenue differences or expenditure differences. And the change to fund balance, were there any questions on that? Okay, getting back to my agenda. Superintendent report, page one oh six. Scott had a detailed updates and.
Yeah, and just on item one oh six is just that we normally see a different enrollment report, but the one on page one oh six gives the entire district report, so it includes the parochial students in this one, just as a matter of reference from the beginning of the, of the year.
Thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Otherwise, my report has, you can read it.
Okay. And then next up are board committee reports. So we'll start with, well, I've, Lisa, I'll start. Facilities and grounds meant last week, was that last week we discussed? The, I'm just like, my mind just went blank.
Biggest item was simply, we were approached by a firm to do an energy study in the district. And they'll do an overview study to begin. They'll come out and walk around with Brent, take a look at different things over a couple day period. The company does energy, like lighting retrofit or other ways that you can recover costs and pay for the project. We've done some of those in the past, but again, our, our building is now seven years old and technology changes within that time period. So there's, they will come out and just do an overview of the district as an initial study. If this company in particular doesn't pursue anything, if they don't see at least a million dollar project in a school district, so they won't pursue anything, but they will give us an assessment back to let us know what they did find. If we choose to engage it, we'll let them do that initial study, then we'll bring that back to the facilities and grounds committee to have them hear the results of that and determination if there's, if there's a project worth pursuing here. At that time, we also can talk about some of our longer term facilities pieces to see if we can work those into a project and kind of have a package of things that they would work on. But those are decisions that we make once we've had them do the initial assessment of the district. Their feeling just in, when it came to us, in part, they were recommended by our, the company that has all of our equipment for monitoring our energy process, the year old company has encouraged them to come out here and take a look at what we have. Just their outdoor observations by looking at what we have for outdoor lighting. They feel that we have a project that will approach a million dollars just in looking at the outdoor lighting plus a very brief walkthrough, but they'll invest a couple days in walking through with Brent to get an idea of whether or not there's a full project. That was the bulk of what we talked about at the facilities.
And then Booster Club met, but I was not able to attend. And then ECFE meets this Thursday, which I won't be able to attend, but I'll get the notes and share them with you. So, Lisa.
Response to intervention met Friday, I was unable to be there. Stearns County Family Collaborative meets this Wednesday, so I'll be able to report next time. That's a twice-a-year meeting. And then my other committees didn't meet.
Technology meets this Thursday.
I.
In case you didn't know.
Did not know that, and I also cannot attend. Do I have a, hold on, I can look myself here.
It's in your, your new one at your left hand, but.
Is that one?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Lynn, are you still on? I thought I had somebody else that was on technology on occasion, but I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing anyone that has that privilege.
Is that something where you, where there's, I, I've never served on that committee, where an alternative would be desired?
For the, for the most part, the agenda this Thursday is to talk through and get feedback from the committee members about referendum issues and items related to the referendum. So anybody that can make it would be.
Nice, yeah.
So what time is it at the meeting?
Lisa, does it say on there? Is it after school? It's usually.
It's usually at three, but let me look real quick. Three ten.
And here.
Usually here.
Okay, so if anybody on the board would like or can make that, I cannot make that, but if anybody would like to make that committee meeting, contact Scott. Does that work?
Sure.
Thank you. Great. Okay, Sunny.
Policy committee met on September thirteenth. We brought a number of policies at either first, second, or third stage. We're meeting next on October fourth to review policies six five, six six, and six seven, and whatever else we can get to in the time that we're together. Right now, I think we're still on track to meet twice a month until we decide otherwise.
Yeah, we're still not quite where we need to be.
Right.
Still getting caught up.
Yeah.
Okay, Shannon is not here. Does anybody, I don't know if anybody would have updates on any of his committees or if they even met.
Yeah, staff development committee met.
Oh, yes, obviously. Yep, okay.
Well, staff development committee met and quite a bit of the time was talking about Academy Day and our collaboration. We're expecting to have holding for it and some staff from Albany at our Academy Day and a lot of organizational pieces around that. Other conversation was just about distribution of duties with reorganization and restructure. And so it was a pretty good meeting, but those were the key topics.
Lynn?
Okay, negotiations is moving forward. We will be meeting with the teachers tomorrow night again. We probably will be in a position that we're going to want to have a closed session with the board pretty soon, depending on what comes out of that meeting with the teachers tomorrow night. We also had a meeting last week with the principals. We're waiting for, we've given them a proposal, waiting for response from them. We do not have another meeting set up with them. We're probably very close to finalizing things with them. Overall, we've got, with the teachers, we've basically got a hold of almost all of the language. I think the open things are, there's a few things that were originally on our list that we've left open. And then they have some language that they're proposing and special ed teachers that they want us to respond to, but otherwise, most of the language has been resolved. It's all finance now. So we are probably between four and five percent apart. And that's where we'll need to.
This one's going to see.
Where we'll probably need to get feedback from the board as to, when we're getting a little bit closer on the numbers. Scott, would it work for us to set a closed meeting after the next, even though we have work session at the next board meeting? I'm thinking we're to the point where we probably do need to go over the teachers' financial numbers with.
Of course.
That's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Fifth Monday has not met, gets traffic leave. We have nothing.
Fifth Monday will meet in October and we are the host for Fifth Monday.
Okay.
By decision of the city administrators.
Okay, curriculum committee meets this week, Friday morning, so I'll be going to that. Meeting confer, they have not said anything yet for fall.
No.
And C met last Friday. I did not make it. Did you get there?
Yes, Joel and I actually attended, Joel was doing some things, working on the superintendent potential license. But two things, one, the one speaker was on the new ESA plan or the federal legislation replacing No Child Left Behind. Every student succeeds that. Nothing really new in terms of what I heard in there, but there's, the core issue behind it is that most of ESA was introduced as giving more flexibility to states. And in many ways, flexibility has been removed in the process. There are some additional requirements that ESA has that, that haven't been done under No Child Left Behind. And implementation actually will begin next spring for the eighteen nineteen school year, but all of our test results from this spring will form the base of the groundwork for it, SI, in eighteen nineteen. So we'll be sharing those things as we, as we walk through, but it was just an overview of that. The other thing that was interesting was, the other presentation was by Bill Morris, South Morris Leatherman Company. They just do a survey of Minnesota in, in late summer, early fall. Lots of interesting shifts in how people are thinking in the state. Basically, the, the theme was that the polarization in the state is becoming much more clear and more sharply defined as people are identifying with one thought line or another thought line. The numbers are becoming much closer in nature in that just those that identify themselves as Republican in Minnesota, for example, are thirty-seven percent of the population now. Those that identify themselves as Democrat are thirty-nine percent of the population in Minnesota right now. And the issue is that, as they sort through the other issues, that people are becoming more firm in their beliefs. So the number between the two parties is closer, but the gap between the two is becoming wider, is essentially the theme. And then they walk through how that affects schools. And actually, there's some, if the trends that he identified statewide are true, support for schools is very much higher. Support for equitable funding of schools and going towards state funding is much higher than it has been. And that districts shouldn't have to go out on their own to raise the funds that are needed. That we, we should be funding that at the state level. And basically, they found a broader base of support for referendums, which hopefully is supportive of ours this fall.
Which is interesting because the last couple years, more referendums have failed.
Right.
So how did he reconcile that information with the fact that the survey?
They just said it was a shift over the last year, that people are, people are much more supportive of schools over the last year and that more likely than not, the referendum would be supported locally, even though people believe it should be funded at the state level. Because it's not being done at the state level.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the Fifth Monday? Because I'm on that committee. It's not on the upcoming events and activities calendar, so what time is it? And by us hosting it, does that mean it's here in the district?
Yeah.
Or in this boardroom, or where?
We, we get to host it wherever we would like to and we get to set the time, so.
Okay, so we don't know that answer yet.
Typically, in summer, we try and push it later into the evening to give people more opportunity. In the fall, we probably will look at like seven o'clock or six o'clock. Lynn, you've been at a lot of those too.
Yeah, usually seven.
Seven, yeah.
When, when the townships host it, they tend to go later because their meetings usually start later. But when we host it, we usually try for a seven o'clock.
And somewhere in the building?
Yeah, most likely here in the boardroom.
Sometimes we've done it in the, during the D F one, the senior center at one point.
Yeah, we've done it in a variety of places, just to let people see sites.
Okay, so.
But we'll get that all.
Okay, all right. Oh, we'll go to Jason and then we'll have, see if you have any to add, Scott.
Ben Sterns, let's see. They have this annual special education meetings for districts and that went well. They review, they're doing the IP review of files and it sounded like they did ten, ten charts for McCory. And they have to get that out to, for any corrections, if there's any carries or mistakes by the tenth of October. So they're doing that. They, and I'm sorry, the acronym M A S E, Scott, they had.
Yeah, special education is the association for special.
Okay, so some of the hot topics were, they talked about dyslexia and transportation costs with sped. So they were talking about that a little bit. And we did have a chance to talk a little bit about some of the, Lynn had talked about the negotiations with the special ed request for negotiations and talk about what other districts are experiencing or how to manage that. And so it was, it was sort of some good dialogue. I think one of the.
Anybody had a contract?
Foley, Foley had said that they do something with like a clerical position and has that person do all of the clerical to try and save time for, with all the requirements that, with paperwork for all that stuff. And so that was one discussion point. And I don't know if there's any other takeaways from that, it was just some general discussion, but that was probably the one that was sort of popped out most glaringly.
And Alicia was gonna give us more formal feedback before tomorrow's session.
Yep.
Any other committees haven't met? Or, sorry, did you?
Oh, no, yeah, financial and community, yep.
Okay, okay. And then Shannon, Scott gave us an update on staff development, but were there any, did any of your other committees meet?
No, we're, uh, community ed is gonna meet here, I think, next week or two weeks.
Okay.
And then Joel, just, there's a couple meetings for the Minnesota State High School League, which I think are coming up.
Okay, okay. All right.
Quick, give a report.
Oh, we have the technology referendum, thank you.
Yeah, so we met tonight. And so we've gotten a fairly good group of people. I'm trying to think as far as number wise. Adam, I can't remember.
Huguen.
Huguen, yeah. And then, I'm sorry, maybe I don't need to get this much detail. But so we've had, we've met twice and we're gonna meet next Monday. We're, I think we came up with a theme. I have it on my phone. It's sort of an IT acronym, but invest today. Sort of an IT acronym, but invest today, improve technology impact tomorrow, was the, sort of the theme with Recoree proud, keep Recoree proud. And then something about small price, big impact and that too.
And share how she's put all that together.
So one of the group members is going to try and put something together so that we can dialogue about that and then try to get the messaging out as soon as possible. So hopefully, maybe by the end of the week. She was going to work on it tomorrow and then send an email out to that group and then get some feedback and then we'll meet next Monday. Nicole Ballberg is the treasurer, so if you are inclined to give donations to that committee, she would be the contact person to, for that.
They will need some funds to, mostly for printing because they want to hand out flyers at parent type events, football games, conferences, that. And then there's also going to be a focus on trying to use absentee ballots to get people to vote. So we were looking into, you know, what's the chance of on the night of parent conferences that we can have the district office open and Barb can be sitting there with lots of absentee ballots.
Is that legal? I mean, do you need volunteers to do it instead?
No, actually.
No.
It has to be.
Oh, it has to be?
Yeah.
Absentee ballots have to be handled by appropriately trained people here. The applications can be distributed by anybody.
Okay.
Any absentee ballot has to have an application for absentee ballot.
Okay.
So yeah, Jennifer Bonsock is in charge of sort of the absentee ballot initiative. And so she's going to, I think there's a couple of other committee members that are going to try to work with the schools and potentially handing out the application with an envelope that can get sent out to, to have an absentee ballot sent to your house to complete. But like.
Actually, we should probably go back and talk. When we originally talked, we talked about the different groups that we have to target. And we said, this time we need to do a better job of making sure that our staff and teaching staff and other staff at the district all have all the correct information so that we get them, giving out the correct information to parents and so that we get them voting. And then it's kind of like, make sure the staff is on board, parents, and then we bring it to community. But we want to kind of follow that path to get information out.
And there is some discussion too of, because I think there is big bang for a buck for 2,000 students, $1 to try and represent that a little more accurately. So they were going to try and do like maybe a 10-year average of what the cost would be. So because actually, you know, this year will go down, the next year will go down and then there'll be another going down, so.
People won't actually cost them depending on?
Yeah, for like agriculture, it won't, because of the redo of what the state did, it won't cost them, they'll still be less than what they were paying previously.
Because of the refinancing?
No, because of the state. Well, the refinancing and the state is changing the pay structure for agriculture land.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
So anyways, yeah, we're meeting next Monday again and I think that's going to probably be the trend. Seems like Mondays at 5:30 is seeming to work for people.
Could we engage the student senate at all? Are you, are you, maybe, and I hate to put you in the spot, but we're going up for technology referendum so we can make sure our, you know, technology infrastructure is up to date. And it's just like everything, it has to be replaced every so often. Making sure computers are current and capable of handling the software that's current and relevant. So that, so that's what is happening and the vote is in November. But I'm sure we have a number of 18-year-olds, for one, that can vote. And two, engaging the student senate to be part of.
If there's a way that we can get this, a student voice to the campaign, I think that'd be great because they're the ones that.
If you're willing, I could put you in on the email.
I would just say the way it would be, I can also talk to Eric about it too. And then I can talk to the student senate at our next meeting, I think it's on Friday, so.
Oh, that'd be great.
Would you need more information to speak to them?
It's just like, for a wide take, I mean, it's just, you guys are having like hosting referendum to like vote whether technology should be updated or not. Is that kind of?
$250,000 a year. So impact property taxes.
It'll impact property taxes, but very, very small amount because we recently refinanced some of our other mortgages. And so those have dropped the cost. And so the technology referendum, while $250,000 is, makes a huge impact on our schools, distributed over our entire community is a very small amount of money per household. And so.
And it's 250,000 for 10, each year for 10 years.
For 10 years.
Okay. So if I were to bring this back to the student senate, what would you want me to, just that they need a representative or that they?
That's, that's probably. Do you have like two or three things that she could communicate and then ask for volunteers to come to the Monday?
I'll try and get something to you before Friday.
Okay.
And if I can just get your email.
Yeah. Okay.
What time do you meet on Friday?
We meet Friday morning at 7:30.
7:30?
In the morning.
Do you want me to come to that meeting?
You could. I don't know if it's probably really busy, but we can make it.
Okay.
Okay. So.
On the donation part, is it, I mean, what are we talking about? Do we need typically?
They're trying to, actually, so that they don't have to do very complicated campaign finance reports, they're kind of trying to keep it under $750. But they really didn't come up with a budget of what it was going to cost. We were kind of looking at, she does have a cost for printing because she's been in contact with Mike at the record. And she was looking at the cost if they decide to do some small yard signs. But the rest of the communication is going to either be, you know, parent to parent or social media.
Which is pretty inexpensive.
Right.
So does Mike, when we put something in the record, I mean, I'm sure it's a fairly small fee. I mean, is there a space in there to say, you know, if we approach some people that want to donate some money, maybe some businesses, can you thank them? You know, thank, I'm thinking about this, the youth association. You know, if I approach the youth association, say, hey, would you guys want to put $200 for this? Can we thank those groups for their support? In that, you know, when we put something in the paper, is that legal?
I think, I think, well, I'm just thinking back to like when, when I did my materials for board, I thanked the union group that I got funding from. Wouldn't it be kind of the same thing?
Yeah, it would have to be the vote yes group, that does the thank you.
Right.
Right. But I mean, it could be, because I guess, I have no problem asking, I mean, I'm not very good at a lot of things, but I'm good at giving money. I don't have a problem asking them. But, you know, and, and people will feel, you know, especially these youth groups that, you know, they use our buildings, our kids go to school here, it's, it's a good gesture by them. You don't have to ask for a lot of money, we're only looking for $750,000. And, you know, you get five of these different groups and, you know, maybe a local car dealership that would like to be part of showing people they support the schools. Is that, can we do that? I guess what I'm saying.
You can. I know that right now they're planning approaching the parent, what is it called? PTC in each of the buildings. And in the past, Education Minnesota has actually contributed to some of the referendums.
Why don't you, I would suggest that you contact Nicole.
Okay.
And say, would you like me to ask maybe?
Because I really think the youth, the coastal area youth association would.
Right.
Do you need Nicole's contact information?
She's my neighbor.
Oh.
I don't, maybe I have her number, but I can.
That was where to find her.
Okay.
I will do that.
Well, I'm excited to hear the update from that committee because it sounds like you guys are making really good progress, so that's great.
Of course, the district has to send out information, but Scott, you've got that planned out pretty well or working on it?
Working on it. I wouldn't say it's planned out well yet, but we're working on it.
Trying, we'd still be using kind of the same things that we identified with this group, but, you know, the money's going to go for three major areas. And we're trying to get it as concise as possible, both in what the district is giving out and what the vote yes committee is saying.
We would emphasize the things on page 111.
Okay. So, perfect. Was, was there, oh, and then it's just our upcoming events and activities? I'm guessing the one that was handed out is the most current then?
No, it's just for you.
Thank you. So can I ask a question about what, what this, I don't know how to, how to ask the question, but what is the expectation of the board if we have conflicts due to family obligations or whatever it is? For notice to the board? Should we just be letting Cara and Scott know?
Because I was conflicted and I, I was back and forth and I'm like, you know what? He's only got six games. So I, you know, it happens to be on a Monday night and, but I didn't know, you know, I'd called Cara and I, I didn't know.
The big thing is always making sure we have a quorum so we can conduct, so, I mean, I've always tried to make sure the chair knows if I'm not going to be here so that she's counting heads to make sure. It's like, okay, we got enough people to have a meeting.
Yeah, and that's, I would say that's the biggest deal is, is the quorum piece because if, we have to have four board members present or we can't conduct the meeting.
Right.
So that's the biggest thing. So yeah, me, making sure myself and Scott, I think, would probably be, or just myself.
I'll let Barb know too, because I think a lot of times she knows things.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess I get that piece. I guess my question is if, for me, in making a decision, if there is a quorum, I don't want to feel, I don't want to feel guilty that I'm missing because I want to go to, you know, so what's.
Yeah, was it okay for me?
Well, my, my personal opinion, 100%, you're a parent. This is like your, our personal opinion, we haven't had this discussion.
Right. That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Can we have this discussion?
I think you're a parent first and if, if your kid's playing and, I mean, you don't, you, I think you're capable of making that decision based on what's on the agenda, based on, you know, what's happening with the game and all that stuff. I have no problem with it. I mean, we've never had board members just not come because they don't want to or whatever. I think all of us, I trust the professionalism of all of us that you would make the right decision. And if it were my kid, I would go to the game, so.
Baseball, wrestling matches, lots of them, I probably would have, but football, there is, you know, so I just want everybody to know that it, you know, it's.
So did they win?
They lost 14-6, or 13-6. He threw interception at the end of the game, so it's not going to be a fun night for him. But they played, I mean, they played better than I anticipated against Alex, so it was.
That's tough.
Does anybody else have comments on that or your feeling with historical piece?
I think, for Sunny, in my perspective, I mean, we're spending a lot of time in non-board meeting, meetings too outside of this, so I mean, we have to juggle that schedule to make that work. And so if it comes to be that this is the one thing, you know, and I've had to go out and go to a band concert when it's right there. They had that meeting for the sports that I was late to and so there's just stuff that you just got to do as a parent, so.
And I've, I've missed two board meetings and it was for travel for fun out of state. And I, it was, you know, tough to call, but I'm not going to miss a family trip for a week over. So I try to schedule around it, but, so I've, I've also made those judgment calls where I'm doing something that's.
Yeah, and I ran into the same thing with Bakery Association. I will miss some meetings because I work for the Bakery Association and they tend to have meetings over weekends. And if I'm still traveling back on a Monday, there's still.
So it sounds like I don't get whooped here.
Oh, no. No, no, not at all.
Can I only ask the question because he called me, so what do you think I should do?
And I said, you know, because I, I don't want to let anybody down and I struggled with it, that's why I didn't say anything this morning, because I was fully not planning on going to the game. And then I just finally decided, you know, it's, you know, he gets hurt tonight and he doesn't play the rest of the year and, you know, I'd feel bad about that, so.
No problem. Okay. Okay, and then there was just one tiny piece, I know we're almost ready to adjourn, but Scott, as part of your superintendent report, just reporting that the policies, our board policies will be translated into Spanish and that's something that will be worked on as a, as they have time basis, correct? So.
Starting with the most recently approved?
Oh, actually, that's a really good point.
Is that something that came out of policy committee or where, or how did that come up?
That was part of our discussion as setting the agenda. And we were talking about where to fit it in and he had already solved the problem. So he wanted to update the full board.
So do we have a person doing it or do you have software that translates it nowadays?
No, we're, we're working with the three folks we have initially, but well, that's a question for them, is it easier to send it off?
There's some pretty good software out there nowadays that does translate stuff.
And I will say that we did talk about it in a policy committee about the fact that we're going to have to look at, at making some of those things. And at some point, we may have to translate into other languages too. And so we did have that conversation.
I know there's, there's some software now that you can use to translate like your whole website. The Bakery Convention that I work on is an international bakery convention every three years and they've been able to set up the website so that anybody coming onto it can translate it into, I think, four different languages.
I know when I, when I worked at a former employer that had employees that spoke seven different languages, a lot of what I did was employee communications. You have to be really careful when you're using software to have somebody that can read the, what it translates to, to make sure that it didn't translate something out of context. Because you can run into some issues.
Software can do it fast and then the person can.
Has to review it. Yeah.
I just had a community feedback.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And I realized I had just, yes, so community feedback.
Probably committee, just the feedback was just the accessibility of the athletic fields for handicap people, especially like the football field with gravel. And so it's not going to, it's not fix it or whatever, just long-term planning, like what's the plan to be in awareness? So apparently it's far for people who, you know, may have issues.
Mobility.
Mobility issues.
Joel and I talked about that, about the football field a little bit too. And if, depending on when the person arrives at the game, there are a couple of gates that could be opened to allow them to drive over to the stands because the stands themselves are disability accessible. But we could drive over there and if that doesn't work, there is another gate closer that they could come on the backside. So there are ways to help with that.
Yeah, whatever plan or needs to come up with, you know, just maybe to promote that for some people, I think like grandparents and things who want to go and see their kid, their kids play.
I, I don't know where things are at with the sound system in the high school gym, but I attended the variety show on Monday and it was really hard to understand what was being said. So I don't know if we've done anything with it, recalibrated, made changes? And if we did, it didn't work. So that's my, that's community feedback from me as the community. And then the other thing that I noticed attending my daughter's volleyball games in the middle school gym is that one of, like the main scoreboard on the floor wall, light bulbs are out where you can't even tell, I mean, you cannot tell what the score is because the whole top row is missing. So if it's a 17, it could look like an 11. And then there's bulbs on the side of one of the numbers or in the, I don't know, but I don't know if that's something that we can pass along to the building and facilities.
Yeah.
I did talk to Brad Bowler, who's going to talk to Bob to find out if it's just lightbulb. I mean, if it's been like that, from what I understand, it's been like that for a long time.
I did, because I made, I was like, oh, what's the score? And somebody that was sitting there with me said that, that scoreboard has been out like that since their 10th grader was a 7th grader. But it's just looks.
I'm hoping that it's more than a lightbulb. It's like, you know, you can't, it's like, need a new scoreboard. So someone, I did ask to find out that question, but.
Yeah, you happen to be at Macy's game the day that I noticed it.
Okay. Were there any more? Okay, were there any more, we're, sorry, sorry, switching back to upcoming events, we talked about all of that, right, we're all, is there any, okay, so, um, any more community feedback pieces? All right, motion to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Lynn, second by Jason, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.